Good evening. This is the Committee of the Home Meeting. I'm Jonathan Landsman, Board Chair for the Treasure for the Finance Committee. And first item on the agenda is roll call.
Ms. Widger? Dr. Hans provided notification she wouldn't be able to attend. Ms. Newman? Ms. Rue?
Here.
Ms. May? Mr. Torres? Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Furman?
Present.
Dr. Giles? Pastor Jones?
Present.
Mr. Cowan?
Present.
Mr. Landsman?
Present.
So, we have a quorum for the Finance Committee. We just don't have for policy.
Well, maybe we'll see if someone comes by.
There's no approval items on the agenda too, for under policy.
Right. It's just informational, no actual. All right. First, the second item on the agenda is public comment. Yep. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Hearing none, is there anyone remote?
If you are online and wish to speak to public comments, please raise your hand at this time.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is... Sorry, the screen frozen. Well, while we're waiting to catch up, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. The move, thank you. Thank you. It's been moved, it's supported. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next on the agenda is the financial update. Hello, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Oh, that would be Eddie.
Yes, Eddie Brown, filling in for Patrick Franklin, our interim CFO. So, real briefly, before I jump into the May financials, I just wanted to speak to the board. I believe every, the board members should have received the audit reports that was submitted back on June of 28, 2024, from our auditors. We did receive a clean or unmodified opinion. The auditors go through a slew of processes in conducting this type of engagement. One of the reports that is required, because we receive federal awards from the feds, is to conduct a single audit. And so thankfully, that was even a clean report. There were no significant deficiencies or internal weakness over internal controls that they noted. They didn't note any non-compliance with the programs that were tested. I believe it was three major programs that they selected to test this year. Substance abuse prevention program, along with, I believe it was the state opioid response program in our ARPA, or the COVID dollar. But everything went well, even with the compliance exam that is required to be reviewed as well, that is submitted to the state, that had no modification or objections to those numbers. So, I did want to bring that to the board, that we did have clean reports.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay. I do have one for you.
Okay.
You said they reviewed three different programs. Was I correct in hearing that two of those were substance use?
Yes, the substance abuse and prevention program, because that is really the biggest pot of federal monies that we receive. So typically, that's normally one of the programs that they do test. That along with the state opioid response program. So, yeah, so two SUD programs and COVID dollar programs, one COVID dollar program.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want the board to note that, this is you. The auditors will be here at the board meeting on the 23rd to go over the full audit for your review. They just weren't able to attend tonight.
Yes.
But it is, and the full report is in your board packet, so if you have any questions for them.
It's only 47 pages, so feel free to read through it.
Yeah, you got about 10 minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Next Tuesday, they'll be here at the board meeting.
Yeah, the board.
So, the 16th. So, if you have any questions, if you could email them to myself, and I'll get them to Eddie and the auditors, so they might be able to answer them, you know, have come prepared with any questions. So, between now and next Tuesday. Yep.
All right. Next topic, I guess.
Okay. All right, next up is our May 31st, 2024 financials. And so, the very first graph we have is our MDHHS payments from October through May 31st. As we look at the numbers, as we have been seeing each month, that we've seen these totals, they have somewhat decreased a little bit. We saw a slight spike up in April, which we knew April was the first month that we started to receive the increased payment from the department, along with some additional, I think, funds that came in, such as HRA and our performance bonus incentive payment. And so, not too big of a change from April to May, slightly down roughly $950,000, I believe is the total. Next page. Or, next slide. And so, this is our eligibles. And so, again, we have been monitoring and watching this trend. We are still seeing decrease in the eligibles, or the numbers of people. The good thing that I did note about this, as we look at it, I think in total, as we compare April to May, is probably down roughly $8,000. The biggest decrease in those eligible totals are within the Healthy Michigan program, I believe. It decreased roughly about $4,000 from last month to this month. The smallest decreases amongst our DAB are disabled and blind, which I believe is our highest rate population. And so, that went down approximately 930 individuals, or eligibles. Next slide. Yes.
While we're on this, this could be a question from multiple people. All right, so that's through the end of May, which theoretically was the end of redetermination. Is that theory holding, or is it still spilling over into June and continuing to go down?
It's definitely going to spill over, because even though they predicted that would be the last date, actually, there's 45 and 90 days when people can do their redetermination. So, if there's a problem, and there's an issue, they have room to go back and make those corrections and changes. So, we could see some changes, probably not a whole lot. The thing that sort of scares me is the fact that the state is very proud of their efforts to do the redetermination, but they are open to seeing some of the challenges and the problems. But we also have to remind people to check where categories they're in, because if you have Medicaid, you don't know. And the other issue that has come back to haunt us with the end of the public health emergency is Medicaid spend down. So, people, we don't have a lot of the funds that we had before to pay and help support Medicaid spend downs. So, a lot of people will be on Medicaid spend downs and not realize it. But it's whether, it's really an area we need to advocate for, because it's either you have Medicaid or you don't. Many people don't know how to meet their spend down. They don't even know what their spend down amount is. It's really, it puts people at a disadvantage when they're on Medicaid spend down, because that means they're not fully eligible for coverage until they spend their own money.
Next slide. This is our asset comparison for October through May. So, a couple of things I wanted to point out. When the last, I believe, in the April financials that were presented to the board, the numbers for the audit wasn't totally final. I think we tried to make the board well aware of that. So, what you see right here in front of you for the September numbers are the true final audit numbers. And the reason I'm bringing that up, so, as we go through this, I believe the last presentation we presented to the board for April, we were projecting a net position around $44 million, roughly. And so, that number has changed. And so, I'm going to point out a few numbers in this graph to show some of those changes, because it's between the assets, along with the liabilities, those changes that is going to get down to our net total net position. So, the first graph, the green part represents our September 30th, 2023, should be that number. It's in 2024, the date. But $63.8 million was our cash and investment total. That's a little down slightly from the last number we presented, I think about $470,000. The receivables for September 30th ended up with being $40,715,000, so up about $7 million, approximately $7 million. Two factors that's driving that number. We went back and determined, after working with the two CCBA providers, Easter Seals, CNS, that provides the service, that there were additional days or totals that hadn't been reported. And so, when we went back and did those relook and reconciliation with those numbers, we reported that to what it should have been, and that increased what the settlement amount that would be due to us. So, within that number, I think the settlement came in about $5.6 or close to $6 million. And then, the other million or so that's in that number is our lease. We are required, because of the new GAZV 87, because we are landlord and we lease space, we're required to amortize that and show it on our books. And so, those are the two numbers that are driving that receivable. And roughly, everything else for September 30th stayed the same. The other assets, which is mainly our prepaid, our capital asset, that number didn't change. We've been tracking that throughout the year. And so, those are the biggest changes within the asset. As for May 31st, 2024, we see that our cash and investment is at $54.5 million, not too far difference than what we were reporting in April. Our receivables down, or up a little bit, $41.8 million. Could be due to increase in grants that we might be reporting, or some other receivables that we're expecting. And then, our other assets is up again, up by roughly $240,000. And our capital assets, as we expect, that number should decrease over time, which is our standard monthly depreciation amount. So, nothing other than the two things that are pointed out that is, you know, significant change from the last time we showed the September numbers to the board. Next slide. On the liabilities, we have our vendor payables. So, again, back to the CCBA C. Because of determined amounts that should have been reported, there were some additional, I guess, DCO days that we had to take into consideration that would be due to the providers. So, our vendor payables went up roughly about $967,000, from the number that was reported to you in April. The due to state is up mostly, I believe, about $6,000. That's due to our SMART grant that we have. There was some additional funds that we had to report back to the department for that, or to SMART for that program. But other than that, the employee payables and the long-term debt, those numbers for September 30th did remain the same. And so, for May through May 31st, we see our payables are down, which is a good sign. Debt is being paid roughly down five, roughly down five or four point some million. Our due to state is down a little bit, a couple of hundred thousand. And our employee payables, which is just mainly our PTO or accrue payroll. And then, our long-term debt, which is our bonds, that amount is quite naturally down, because as we pay that principal and interest, that number will decrease.
Sorry. I know we just adjusted for year-end, you know, and so it backdates everything back to last September 1st, changing our balances, our reserves, et cetera. Do we, what is the schedule that we do true-ups with our core providers? I know at one time, Dana, you were talking about trying to do it on more regular basis, quarterly or every other month or something, so we wouldn't be surprised at year-end, like for this big hit.
Right. Right. So, we did go through our first kind of sort of true-up. We were required to do what is called an EQI that goes to the department. I believe we went through October through February, I believe those are the first five months. And so, those numbers were looked at then. Our next true-up, I think, is coming for the end of June. Might be getting my dates wrong, but I believe it's three times a year that we have to report that. So, we are, you know, taking that in consideration and trying to reflect true active numbers, so we don't have those surprises at the end.
Thank you.
Next slide, net position. And so, this shows pretty much all the totals that we just covered, all total assets, total liabilities. And so, if we take those, the two total numbers, our total assets of $127 million, less the total liabilities of $77.4 million, you will get to the net position total for September and being $50,120,000. So, up approximately $5.7 million better than what we were projecting earlier. And so, as we stated, that flows into all your beginning numbers and get into your ending FY '24 numbers. So, as of May, our ending net position, I believe in April, when we initially reported, that number is roughly around $41.7 million. So, up approximately that $5 million that we're speaking of, we're looking at $46.8 million in a total net position.
Eddie, is part of that related to the extra $2 billion we're getting per month?
Yes. Part of that is, all that flows into it, yes.
Thank you.
All right, next slide. This is our revenue comparison. And so, as we look, we have our Medicaid, which is our biggest pot of money. Medicaid is up roughly, from May of last year to this year, about $27 million. Our state in general funds is pretty comparable, up slightly, I believe about $900,000. And our county funds and all other funds are pretty comparable or the same. Next slide. And so, our expenses, and quite natural, and this is something I want, you know, the board to be mindful. I think we do see the increase in revenue, but also the increase in expenditures are there. And as we have seen, I believe, our deficit for the end of September 30th, 2023, we ended about $10.8 million. So, revenue is up, well as our expenses. Our administration is up slightly, $2.3 million, I believe, in comparison to last year, this time to this year. So, from $18.4 million to approximately $20.7 million. But our biggest increase is within our provider network, as expected. It's up roughly around $22 million. And pretty much our grants and all of the funds are pretty much the same. And so, even though we're seeing higher revenue, we're pushing out just that much in expenses as well. And so, as you also alluded, the additional funding that the department, that's factoring in into that revenue as well. Next slide.
Any question?
Go ahead.
The administration increase, can you speak more to that, or what that would be from?
It can be several factors. We know, we have seen increase in staffing over the last year or two. We have increased staff. I think, if I remember correctly, the number is up to approximately 260 employees. And so, I was just talking to someone just a minute ago. Ten years ago, when I came here, I believe it's about 100 people. So, to get, you know, so some of that is due to staff. Some of that might be due to additional things that we are purchasing to ensure that we can provide the services to the people we serve. So, it's not just one thing, but if we need the more detail, the specifics, I can get that number and bring it back to the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And so, our net income, net income, total revenue for this year or last year was approximately $300.9 million versus our expenses of $306 million. Looking at our total revenue, up about $27.5 million to $328,561,000. And our expenses up approximately $23.5 million, so getting that to a grand total of $329,587,000. And so, the net of those two numbers getting us to our net loss for May of 2024 of approximately $3.3 million. And so, we're pretty much trending in line, I believe, what we brought to the board on our BA1 that was presented. We said our net loss for the year was going to be around $7.5 million. So, we're eight months in, and we're seeing this loss as of right now. And so, a little better than where we were last year, than at that time. But again, $2 million of that for April or May is the additional funding that we're receiving, that we're seeing that, so. Next slide. And these are our top 15 providers slash contractors. One thing I did want to note here, having gone back and determined exactly, but someone might have seen it, McComb Oakland Regional Center, MORT, is shown here twice, but if you, those numbers are true separate numbers, it's not being double counted here. But the grand total for MORT should be $52,506,242. If you look, if you look down, I think you'll see the $46 million, $46.8, but then further down the graph, we'll see MORT again for $5.6 million. And so, I'm not sure why our visit table did that and broke it out like that, but I'll be sure to make sure that we're not confusing it and showing, you know, any type of duplication. It's not a duplicate number.
Does it reflect Easter Seals versus MORT?
Yeah, so, that's totally MORT. The next number is Easter Seals, and so, those are the two separate organization payment totals. And the last slide is just the top 15 providers and the description of the service. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I just, in response to John Paul's question about the administration, I do note it may be more than last year at the same time, but according to the page 13, which is Statement of Revenues and Expenses to Budget, we're actually, the way I'm reading it, we're actually to the good by about $2.6, $2.7 million. So, we're significantly under budget in administration. So, if you have any, I'm sure part of the difference between the two years was the budget. We budgeted for things, but not everything has happened. So, right now, we're enjoying a savings from the administrative area. I just wanted to note that, just because it got brought up, and I was kind of perusing that last page, which is the budget page, and which is important also. All right, thank you.
Other questions, conference? All right. Thank you so much. And again, everyone takes a few minutes and read the audit. All right. Next on the agenda is the policy management side. So, I'm going to turn the gavel over.
Okay. Megan Phillips.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me here today. Today, I'm going to discuss with you our recovery incentives pilot that we have been selected by MDHHS to be a part of. So, first, it's been a while since I have been in front of all of you, so let me reintroduce myself. My name is Megan Phillips. I'm the Director of SUD Services here at OCHN. Next slide. So, MDHHS announced a recovery incentive pilot in November of 2023. We knew about it behind the scenes before it was formally announced. We meet with MDHHS monthly for SUD. It's all 10 of the PIHPs. They come to our SUD directors' meetings. And we have monthly meetings to hear what is going on specific to the SUD population. So, they had been telling us a few months before and asking about interest and seeing who would be interested in it. And so, in knowing that ourselves within our SUD department with contingency management, we had already been asking some of our medication-assisted treatment providers to be piloting contingency management on a small front. We were very interested in seeing what was the person-served engagement, as well as what was their cost that they were incurring for it, so that way we could then take a look at the budget and be able to see is this an evidence-based program we want to be able to continue to fund moving forward. So, when MDHHS announced this pilot, it was perfect timing for what we were already doing. And we were able to use our COVID- and we were able to use our COVID supplemental block grant funds to be able to offer our entire provider network contingency management training in knowing that this pilot was going to be announced. So that way, any of the providers who had interest in this recovery incentives pilot, they would have that evidence-based training that they would need already, and we were able to provide it with our COVID block grant funds. So it was, the cost then was taken care of for them. So MDHHS requested applications in December of 2023. We were notified in April of 2024 that we were awarded to be a part of the pilot. Implementation for this is to start around October 1st of 2024. Next slide, please. So first, to give a quick overview of what is contingency management, it's an evidence-based treatment, and the purpose of it is to reinforce people's behavior with small incentives. So essentially, if we want people to become more engaged in treatment services, to come to their scheduled one-on-ones, to have negative drug screens, when they do these scheduled activities, they will then receive an incentive in a non-cash reward, typically it's a gift card. They'll receive an incentive for displaying that positive behavior. So the recovery incentives pilot is a 24-week outpatient service that's available for Medicaid beneficiaries with a qualifying diagnosis of stimulant use disorder or an opioid use disorder. The incentives will be provided as gift cards with the total amount that they can receive up to $599, and it will be distributed via an incentive manager platform. So MDHHS, they put out an RFP to seek out an entity that would handle the incentives essentially. And so it's an entire platform that is designed for the provider to input in whatever the goals are, the incentives. Provider inputs the information in there, and then the state's provider in that platform, they actually then send out the gift card, and they handle all of those pieces of it. So we reached out to our provider network. We asked them who had interest in participating in this pilot. We have four providers who will be participating, and that's Oakland Family Services, Sacred Heart, Meridian Health Services, and Therapeutics. The recovery incentive pilot will go for two years and will continue through September of 2026. Medicare, those who are dual eligible that have Medicare and Medicaid, they are eligible to participate in this program. And the key part is, is that a person has to have Medicaid. So same thing if a person has third-party insurance and Medicaid. As long as a person has Medicaid, they're able to participate in this. Next slide. Yes?
So they, they don't have to have Medicare? They don't have to be a dual? They just have to have Medicaid?
Correct.
Okay.
And if they do happen to have Medicare or Medicaid, that is fine, as long as that Medicaid piece is there, a person served can then choose to be enrolled in the pilot.
Okay, thank you.
Yes? All right. Yes?
I was wondering, is this program been done successfully in other states, or?
It has been. That is the model that MDHHS is following. I believe it's California has already rolled this out and has been doing it. So that is the model that they're following in terms of having a platform manager who's doing the incentives, as well as, and I'll get to it a little bit later, it'll roll out in cohorts, so it's not going to be everybody, all at once, all the regions, every provider. It's going to be very staggered. And then in terms of how they are funding it and the use of Medicaid funds and codes for the services as well, that's following all the structure from California.
I was wondering if any information is available about relapse with the participants in the California program?
I don't have it offhand, but I can certainly look into it and provide it back to you.
Thank you.
All right. So the goals, the goals for the recovery incentive program is to improve health outcomes for benefits, increase engagement and retention in treatment, reduce the number of emergency department visits, and reduce the rates of repeated ED visits, and reduce adverse health outcomes. So part of what the state is doing with this pilot, they are funding it partly through Medicaid funds and then partly through opioid settlement dollars that they directly received. So for the services that are being provided, the outpatient services, the group, the drug screens, those are all codes that providers will utilize that will be billed to Medicaid. The contingency management piece that's being done, that's also going to have a code. MDHHS, they did an increase with the capitation rate to account for the contingency management. And then in terms of the opioid settlement funds, they are using that to cover the cost of the incentives and the platform for those incentives. Next slide, please. So our responsibilities as the PIHP are to participate and complete required trainings as well as conduct oversight for the providers to ensure that they are doing all of their trainings as well, participate in technical assistance, and conduct oversight of provider participation. With technical assistance, we are to report to MDHHS on our pilot implementation, any issues that we are running into, assist providers in addressing programmatic and technical issues. OCHN will be receiving a $15,000 startup funds from MDHHS. Really, that's to help account for staffing time that will be utilized. We have a team member on my team, on the SUD team. Their role will be to oversee this project. They are our lead that works directly with the providers, and they're that go-between to work with the providers, ensure implementation is happening correctly, technical assistance is provided by them, and then that person also reports directly back to the state on how everything is going or what our needs might be. Next slide. So for the provider, they have a couple of different responsibilities as well. First is to have at least three staff trained for the pilot. The first person is the recovery supervisor who oversees all the coordinators, makes sure that any policy changes that need to happen at a high-up level, at an executive level, happen. Then there is the recovery incentive coordinator. They are the staff that does the urine drug screens, enters the incentives into the platform. They're kind of that frontline staff that is working directly with the people served and implementing the program on a daily basis. And then a backup coordinator, simply because of possible staffing turnover, somebody taking PTO time. And then startup costs that will be given by MDHHS. It'll flow through us to the provider. It'll range between $7,000 to $10,000. The first cohort that goes will receive a higher dollar amount because they're kind of starting it off. There might be a few more growing pains in there. And then as the cohorts start to launch, the startup fund will decrease down to about $7,000. And next slide, please. So the current status of where we're at right now, the MDHHS, they're working on identifying the different stages of cohort. So the first cohort is expected to launch October 1st. It's expected that we are a part of it. MDHHS, they sent out to our four providers who volunteered to be a part of it, kind of a readiness assessment to see who's in a spot right now, who might be currently doing contingency management right now that's in the best spot to be one of the first, one of the first in the cohorts to go. So tentatively, one of the providers has been selected, Oakland Family Services, that they will be in cohort one. There will be roughly 30 participants total for the cohort between the 10, or the eight different PIHPs that are involved. And then after the cohort's launch, I believe it's about every three to four months, a second, third, fourth, fifth cohort will launch. And with that, any questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes?
Is this going to be individual or group service modality, or a combination of both?
Combination of both.
Okay. And how will the 30 individuals be selected?
It will be based on making individuals aware of it. So the provider's going to do some advertising. They can put up flyers, make the people served, that they're already servicing aware. Hey, we're going to have this pilot program coming up. This is what it is. It's all based on choice, so it's a person choosing and saying, I want to be a part of this. There's no penalty if somebody says, no, I don't. So it is just based on person choice and provider making people served aware so they can make that informed choice.
Okay. So is it mostly for new applicants coming into the program?
It can be for both.
Or established?
It can be for both, either established or new. And then it is the provider's choice if they want to keep it a closed group and start off with everyone at the same time, or at total, they can have 30, but they can choose to start six people, wait two weeks, start another six people. So they can choose to have it be an open group where it's rolling. And we're kind of in the nitty-grittiest of figuring out those pieces right now with the provider.
Which that probably makes more sense because of recidivism.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes?
The, so what are the incentives that they're going to get?
Typically, it's gift cards. So dependent upon if they've had a negative urine drug screen, it can be a $10 gift card to Meyer, a food establishment, something like that.
Okay. And then, so you said there's a platform, that there was an RFP that went out, and so they handle the distribution of the gift cards?
They will. The intent is that everything is supposed to be as close to real time as possible because that's when you see the best results with someone, when they're incentivized and you receive that immediately. So with that electronic platform, the intent is that the coordinator for the provider, if it's urine drug screens, oh, you attended your attendance, you know, for your group that day, it's all done in real time. Attendance is put in, your drug screen results are put in, and that's going to trigger your gift card to come immediately then.
And then, so there is collection of data, then? Is that, is that what that platform's for? Is it like a system that collects data on drug screens and?
Yes, it's going to collect everything, and we're still learning more about it right now. That's one of the things that we are waiting on to have that training with. It's our al-terum, is who the MDHHS selected to oversee that platform and all of that. So the PIHPs and the provider, we have yet to be able to have our full training with them to see everything, and those are part of what is coming up in end of July and August. So I'll be able to learn more about what this fully looks like on that end.
Yeah, and so, so it's a successful then program, or it's been proven in California?
Yes.
Then you said, and it's shown success with?
Yes, and that is one of the reasons why MDHHS chose to go with it and is choosing to model everything after what they've done.
And then you guys are going to collect data. So then, how often is the data going to be reviewed to see where the program's at?
It'll depend. What I will need to see first is how often, what is that real-time data we're getting? Am I going to be able to get the data download into, how is it going to get sent to us? And how often can I get it? Ideally, what I would be able to like is what we do around here. If we're getting a download nightly, weekly, whatever it is, I can have it flow into about a Power BI report. That way, I'm able to review it as often as needed. So I just don't know what it looks like of how it will come from them yet to determine how much and how often we're going to be able to look at the data.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, um, okay, yeah. I think that looking at the data and seeing what the results are as far as if it's measured on drug screens, somebody has positive, negative, but sometimes if somebody's improving, even though they're still using, that's, that's an improvement.
And those, exactly, and those are conversations I still want to have as well because, in my opinion, really from a harm reduction approach, if someone's primary drug of choice is opioids, and they are not using, but if they test positive for another substance, to me, is that really considered a negative? In my opinion, not. I have somebody who's using a substance that the overdose likelihood is incredibly high, and it can be laced with fentanyl. To me, I mean, I worked frontline in the field for years doing therapy with individuals, and when they would come in and they would tell me, oh, I use opioids, and I also smoke marijuana, and I'm not going to smoke, I'm not going to stop smoking marijuana. Don't even talk to me about it. Like, so I'm not going to. Feel free. Let's talk about your opioid use disorder first.
Right, yeah.
And knowing that, yeah, we can come around to that maybe later. Is it causing a problem in your life, whatnot? But my main concern is the opioid use disorder is what's going to lead someone, you know, to a possible overdose first.
Yeah, that's, I was interested in what the data showed because so many times we measure on success or fail, but there's so much gray in between that if you really dig down and measure that, you can see even more successes there. So it'd be interesting to see that.
Yep, and I usually see that a lot as well when I would sit on adult treatment court. When you have people who maybe historically in their lives, they haven't been able to even just attend appointments, right? And the fact that they've attended three out of five when historically, they just never would have gone. I mean, to me, those are huge wins that we celebrate. So I want to figure out the gray area still because to me, like you said, there's a lot of celebrating that can be done.
Thank you.
Yes?
You know, I'm listening to this, and I'm really excited about it, and thank you. And I'm looking at the connectivity with this and the other committee we're on now, this opioid, and then this other committee, and this intervention. In relation to not duplication, but how do we expand the outreach? My thought is certain persons that may be engaged in the, and I'm going to call it intervention, that we're trying to do, we may find that they are, a lot of the activity has been driven by opioid.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's one. The other thing may be because of the not having proper funds for living or what have you. I'm wondering if there's a way tying that together to help them get into this type of a program.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Which may then aid in the reduction of their use because of the fact that now they're also being treated, but they also are getting some dollars to help them, you know, exist. So I'm wondering, not so much for duplication, but tying, tying the dots together. And maybe even at our meeting next week, or whenever, the 16th, we can talk more about it. But I just feel like you, with Oakland Family Services right there in the heart of the community.
Yeah.
Okay? I just think that there's some great opportunity for us. You may already know that. And so I'm excited about this, and I'm excited about the outreach and the potential that can have. It'd be good to know from the exercise that they had in California.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Not only how many of them came away from this, but how many now have been able to totally get away from, okay? The usage, you know, $599 gift certificate may not seem like much to some people, but it is.
But it is. And to go along with that, I think, you know, for people who might not even be engaged in our SUD services with our contracted providers right now, one of the things that they are able to become engaged with is, one, they can do this program, but two, what we launched in November with our recovery, or our housing assistance program as well. And really, the number-one requirement is you have to be in one of our outpatient SUD contracted providers. And so, and it does, it goes that step further because, yes, for contingency management, not only with this pilot, are you going to be able to work on your sobriety and work on being able to better yourselves and be a productive person, you know, in society, but then you're also getting these gift cards, which are incentives, which for some, they very much, that financial piece is needed. And I know from studies that are done, most of the time, people, they are using the gift cards to buy things that they truly need for their family, food. And items like that, it is not being spent on items that, you know, on drugs, alcohol, or just things that aren't appropriate to be used.
Just for existence.
Yep.
Just for existence, and that's, that's what I'm looking, that's why I think that this, I think that we can do some great work connecting the dots with this.
Yep.
I'm pretty excited about this program and the opioids, and I know we'll talk a lot about it. we'll talk a lot about it.
Yes. Other questions? Yes.
Yes. You, you talked about the platform to distribute the gift cards, are they physical gift cards or are they electronic?
Electronic gift cards. And so, part of the need to find out still from the training is because with our population, we have people who don't have cell phones.
Yep.
What does that look like? How do they receive it then? And so, I would assume there has to be another way that we're able to do it, is it that they would need to set up an email address, that they could be with their counselor, pull up the email right then, receive it, print it? But that's always, whenever I'm doing any work, you know, the SUD population in general, many don't have a cellphone, or it's a cellphone based on minutes. So, it's something that we're very mindful of, and I'll have more answers for this summer as we kind of continue to work on launching it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
That concludes policy.
Okay. Uh, on to other business. We have events and outreach. Suzanne? Bring us up to date.
Suzanne Weiner, Director of Communications and Community Outreach. Just wanna give you a little bit of an update of what we have been doing and have planned for this month and next month. As you're aware, we've been, you know, heavily involved in the Rochester Hills response and with substantial community outreach efforts, one of them being last month at the Festival of the Hills event, having a table there, talking to probably sixty to seventy people at that event, like seriously talking to sixty to seventy people at that event. So, it was a really great event, as well as the splash pad reopened last week, I'm sure as most of you heard. And we did have a table and tent and information and our SISM team out there for that event, and we were able to talk to about eleven people. So, it was a good opportunity to connect with people in that community who did come out. There's actually been a lot of coverage for, obviously, the, the incident, as well as some recognition of OCHN and the efforts that we are doing to help that community, for instance, in USA Today and New York Times. So, just wanted to make mention that we are receiving some recognition for all the efforts that we're doing for the Rochester Hills community. Also wanted to mention, some conference coming up. We have our annual minority mental health awareness event tomorrow. If you're able to join us, please do. We have some really great speakers and entertainment. We're doing something a little bit different with some art therapy and drama therapy for the event. So, there'll be, actually, we're working on some, they're called Stars of Hope, and it's actually going to be geared towards the Rochester Hills community and donating those stars of hope to the Rochester Hills community. So, the artwork that people do during the event will be sponsoring or helping that, that community recover and heal. We're also gonna have Cheryl Meyer, she's one of our staff, she's gonna be talking about communicating with the deaf and hearing impaired community and helping to alleviate some of those mental health concerns related to communication with that community. So, really looking forward to that. And then, we have a wonderful Bollywood dance group coming, actually, one of our interns is part of this group, and it's over at Michigan, Bollywood dance group that's gonna be performing tomorrow. So, we're really looking forward to it. So, I hope you can join us. We have, uh, obviously, some other trainings and workshops coming up. We're attending the View Fest Mental Health Walk and Celebration coming up this month, or actually, next week. Um, next slide. Additionally, we are working really closely with Oakton County Parks, trying to attend some of their ability type of events with their summer splash. We're also doing a diverse ability event at the next month. So, really working with Oakton County Parks, as well as our Oakton County Farmers Market and the Oak Park Market, having a presence there. We're also gonna be attending another event later this month in Rochester Hills, as well as we are hosting our transportation provider forum, as well as our webinar per person served, that is for with OCHN taking over the management of those services. And we've done numerous communication for that. We've email, regular mail, we just actually finished up that mailing today. We were doing a lot of it last week and this, and today, as well as phone calls and information on our website, as well as through our social media, just ensuring that the, our providers and the persons that we serve in our community is aware of transitioning that service. Next slide. I just wanted to also mention, we're doing the same with our self-determination, so our financial management services, we're also hosting a provider forum, as well as a webinar per person served to, to talk about our, taking over the management of that service as well. And same efforts have gone into corresponding with the community and doing that community outreach in terms of mail, email, phone calls, those types of things to, to communicate that change. Also, just to make mention, I'll talk more about it, but our year Boyce value, our annual year Boyce value conference is coming up next month. That is where we honor the individuals that we serve that are nominated, so we hope you can join us for that event. Next slide. Just to highlight some of our press releases, obviously, Disability Pride Month, as well as last week, we put out a PTSD and fireworks press release, just to kinda remind people about fireworks and trying to minimize the effects that might have on individuals who might have some PTSD or trauma related to certain incidents that may have happened. We'll be highlighting our Minority Mental Health Awareness Month event. And as far as our advertising, continuous advertising, hopefully, you're still seeing our commercials and our billboards and bus ads, our cable ads, mall, everything is still out there going strong. We continue that effort, as well as our effort for, efforts for redetermination in terms of our social media and our letters to individuals served. Also, wanted to mention that our conference room usage, continued to provide this facility and this space for the community. Life Skills is here every month continuously, Community Housing Network is always here as well using this space. And then, the state is doing their peer certification, actually, this week, this entire week, they're using our space for that. Another piece I wanted to make mention of, you probably remember our traveling art show, and we received numerous artwork. Three items from that art show went into the traveling art show. But we also purchased the pieces that were remaining, and we are gonna be creating a mural in this room. So, look to have this room spruced up a little bit with some of the artwork from the people that we serve. So, that's coming in, in the next, coming months. That's all I have. Any questions?
Well, this is my first time, I don't know. I'm allowed to talk, but. Um, my, my fault for not getting Suzanne this information, but next week, we are hosting CIT International here for the weekend. We're having our CIT Train the Trainer, where we're gonna train four additional dispatchers, two mental health professionals, and ten additional law enforcement facilitators. So, that's gonna take our CIT, our CIT Oakland Facilitators Group up and more than double the size, so that we can continue to sustain and bring those trainings. So, I'm sorry I didn't get it to you on time.
Nope. I should've filmed it on the calendar, my fault. Thanks, Tricia.
Question?
I know I've been missing a couple of meetings, so you probably covered it, or somebody probably covered it, but I wanted to know more about the transportation provider forum and what's going on with transportation.
So, we are hosting a forum to discuss the transportation transition, 'cause as of October one, transportation services will be managed by OCHN. Providers that are providing transportation still have the opportunity to be, provide those supports, but OCHN is taking over the management of that service. And that is being communicated to those providers, and we're working very closely with those providers to ensure that they are on board. Many of them have already communicated with us their interest in continuing to provide those supports for individuals served. And we're also hosting a webinar for individuals served to ensure that they're aware of what's going on and know that that's not gonna disrupt any of their services that they already are receiving. I, I just wanna add, we also presented, Ms. Newman, we also presented a presentation last month that you weren't able to attend. So, I can get you that presentation, so you're fully aware of it.
Can I ask a question on the, and thank you very much, on the conference room usage, are there certain times that it's available or not available? As an example, is the conference room available after five o'clock?
We always try to accommodate as much as we can to ensure that the space is available for individuals. We've offered it on Saturdays as well for different events, and after hours as well if, if needed, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to know the timeframe for the minority mental health awareness.
It is from nine until noon tomorrow, and noon, at noon, lunch will be served, and it's gonna be delicious, so please come and enjoy.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the transportation. Will, by taking this in-house to manage it, do we think that we're gonna see an increase in capacity or smoothing of the challenges that various groups have had before in terms of operating? And what's, what's the goal for bringing that in-house?
I'm gonna let Sheila or Dana answer that question.
First of all, it's a brave standardization, so we definitely wanna make sure it's more efficient and that the coverage is there. We have seen situations where there's slight differences to very large differences in the rates that are being paid and how that transportation is gonna be pulled out of the other services, so we can actually see the impact that we're gonna have. In terms of cost savings, it's not a matter of cost savings, it's definitely meant to be more efficient and to ensure the quality of transportation services, and that transportation providers are managed in terms of a provider network of transportation and not only aligned with different providers. So, some homes will continue to provide transportation, then there's special transportation that's provided. So, it's really to make things smoother for the end user, which is the people we serve.
So, hopefully, more efficient, more effective.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. On that discussion, drivers, and I, I'm sure we're not going out and hiring them, but maybe some of the agencies that need them, is there a way for us to get a list of agencies that are saying, gee, I wish I had more drivers, or what have you? I've been approached by that, maybe.
Absolutely. That's not something I think we've talked about, but absolutely, I think that's a great opportunity to ensure that we have the capacity, our providers who are providing that service are able to keep those programs fully served.
That is true. Okay. Thank you. That'll help. Thank you.
Any other questions for Suzanne? Okay. If not, we move on to item four B, which is the CEO evaluation reminder. Sheila, or?
Yeah, I, I can handle that.
Okay.
Okay. As everyone on the board knows, we set out on a chronological path to do our annual review of our director, executive director, so our CEO. So, to keep on that, you have until eleven forty-five PM tonight. Uh, I know there's been some responses, but if folks could get that in, you know, tonight or tomorrow morning, I know it was a quick turnaround, and we had the holiday, you know, four-day holiday right in the middle of all this. So, just a gentle reminder, before other methods have to be used, such as, no, I'm only kidding. But in any event, I thank all those participate, and we look forward to getting this information to the HR director, so she can do it, interim HR director, so she can do what she needs to do and present that back to us. Okay?
And then that, once it's presented back to us, then we can review it, massage it, you know, whatever, is that how that works?
Well, I mean, they put together the, the ratings and do a cumulative, yeah, report, along with comments that people had.
So, we could have.
And it's rather comprehensive, so you can, everybody can see what the, what the thoughts were. Okay?
That's the executive evaluation.
Yeah. So, typically, it goes, those results go to the executive director evaluation committee?
Right.
Which is the executive committee? So, the timeline that was set forth is the results are due back today, if you guys can complete it today. If not, we plan to give Mr. Cowan a full list by Wednesday, if he's not completed.
I become the enforcer.
And then, I believe we set a meeting prior to the board meeting for the evaluation committee.
Right.
Remember? Next Tuesday, was that five o'clock?
Right.
And then, and then there was, the study session is dedicated to the full board, remember?
Yeah.
Um, to review with Dana.
Right.
That's how the timeline works.
I sent an email late last night, and I haven't checked if there's a response yet, but there's two categories in the survey where it's continued on to a second page, but both pages are requesting a rating and comments. So, is that correct, or does that need to be changed?
Mr. Cowan shared that with me, 'cause I wasn't on it, but I did respond to that.
Okay.
So, it is two different questions. It's just in the same field, the same title is the same. So, it is separate, two separate questions under that headline.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
Just, I can add, the survey's open till eleven forty-five PM tonight.
Right.
And Glenda was just messaging me that we have four responses.
Okay. All right. So, we need, we need a few more, and we can get that done, and then we'll move forward from there. And thank you for, I could not remember the exact when meetings were gonna occur, but thanks for that update, and that'll, that'll keep us moving forward to have this done by the end of July. In August, right. Exactly. Right.
Next on the, next on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone here in the building that would like to make public comment, feel free to come on up. Hearing none, Laura, if you wanna ask if there's anyone in, out in the field.
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at
Not seeing anything, I will close public comment. There'll be additional opportunities at our next board meetings. At this point, it's board member comment, so we'll start with you, Christina. Pastor?
Let me thank everybody, thank you for the meeting today. Hope everybody enjoyed the holiday, but let me thank Patrick, I understand he's out celebrating the birth of a grandchild, and I do thank to be able to have ten minutes of grandparent pictures. To do, so we could do that. But, but Eddie, thank you very much for your presentation today, and, and each one of you. And, you know, I'm really excited about what Megan is doing. Now, we're sorta connected a little bit more with this opioid thing that we, that got me pulled into. So, thank you very, very much, 'cause I think we could make a dent, you know, in that. And for the promotions that Suzanne does, you know, I'm just overwhelmed with, you know, the number of people, the activities that she gets, it really publicizes, you know, what OCHN is doing. And, you know, we, we hear a lot of people saying, what about this, what about that? But when you look at the activities that's going on and the outreach, you know, you guys do a great job. And so, thank you, and thanks, this committee, for, for that.
John? Dennis?
I was, I, somewhat unfortunate that BDO couldn't be here tonight, but they'll go over the audit, but I, I'll, guess I'll preempt that by, I wanna say thank you and congratulations to our finance team. A lot has happened this year, a lot of curveballs. We haven't had all the staff, and we, we're working on that and getting people back in the, in the place. And despite all that, all those challenges that they faced, we got two clean audit letters. That's very important to the organization, because it means that people can trust the numbers that we put out as being reliable, and that we are fulfilling our mission. When you read through it, the audit doesn't say this, but we are giving that money and getting that money through our provider network to those who are in need. So, I wanna say thank you, despite all the things that have happened this year, and I know how hard an audit process is, and I think what the, you've achieved, the finance department, we're all very grateful to you, and please carry that to all the members of the finance to all the members of the finance team and those who assist you because we are very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvette?
Um, thank you for the financial update, uh, tonight and as well as the information about the recovery pilot program. Cause I, I do know that incentives do work. Um, years ago, they did incentives in substance abuse with Hep C as well as HIV and you don't really hear a lot about that today. And that had a lot to do with the recovery incentives that were done back then. So, looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mel Kaya?
Thank you to the staff for all of the presentations that we got tonight. And I also want to thank the staff and the board for the flowers that I received. Um, I had a kind of rough three weeks. I went from having pink eye in both eyes to having a retina detached in my right eye. So, I had to have emergency surgery. Um, I'm almost completely with my sight in that eye. I go see the doctor tomorrow, but the flowers were gorgeous. And I just want to thank the board and the staff for, um, just for taking care of us the way that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. John Paul?
No comment.
All right. Adam?
Just echoing comments, thank you to all the staff that, um, put work in and, um, presented on the presentations tonight, very informative, um, especially the, um, incentive program, so, or the incentive pilot. So, looking forward to hearing from that in the months ahead. Have a good night.
I just want a minute to thank Eddie for, uh, stepping in and going through the financials and answering all of my questions and everyone else's. Thank you. I know it's not a fun job, helping us understand what does this really mean? So, thank you. And Megan for the substance use materials and interesting pilot, let's see how it goes. All right, um, at this point, we've covered, uh, member comments. Um, we're going to go into a closed session pursuant to M C L one, five, two, six, eight, paragraph one, subsection H, to consider a written attorney-client privileged opinion and recommendations from July third, twenty twenty-four that are exempt from public discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute.
I will make that, uh, motion, but I have to add to it that not only, uh, recommendations from July third, but also recommendations from June fifth, which we previously received. So, I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? Uh, I guess we need a roll call going to.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Root? Mr. Landsman?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Liddress?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. We are now in closed session. We'll just have to.
Well, we're going to, uh, we're going to another room. Yeah, I believe. Sheila? We're going. You're right, okay.
Where are we moving to, over there?